Jack, you're muted.
I see that. I'd like to call the order of the County Commissioners. It's 1:00 PM. We're meeting on the Zoom platform. It's January 19th, 2021. Case, would you like to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yep, that sounds good.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, indivisible and...
Sorry, I'm having a brain fart because I was just on the phone with the county councillor. I'm not quite ready. Eric, can you take over? With liberty and justice for all. Sorry, we can all, we can all just say that this first week has been a lot, but it's been great. And I had a major brain fart, but I'm back. Holy smoke, sorry. That's what we get for having a meeting until 12:45 and then trying to show up again at 1 o'clock. Not quite, not quite ideal, but I'm here.
Okay, so, public comment. If anybody has a public comment, do they please say so on the chat screen? I don't want to miss anybody. So is anybody, I don't see anybody that wants to make a public comment. Is that correct? Okay. Moving right along. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Are we going to have Commissioner comments?
Yeah, but that'll be after the minutes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have my agenda pulled up.
Okay. Have you had a chance to read the minutes?
I have.
Okay. Is that a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. We approve as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
No second.
To move a second in any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pass the three to zero. Okay, Commissioner comments and committee reports. Eric?
Yeah, sorry about that, Jack. I didn't have them pulled right up. I know there's been a press release from the county and also from Amberwell Health that there is the new collaboration between our NEK multi-county health department, the health department here in Atchison County, Amberwell, Amberwell Health, the Atchison Hospital, and the Atchison Community Health Clinic. The collaboration is NEK Shot of Hope. They are starting to register people for the vaccination. I've been on the computer a lot the last couple of days. I've seen, actually saw this yesterday. It came from Amberwell, Amberwell Health. There's also other contact information on there. It's an interesting read. This is getting close to being able to say that we'll have people contacted in the near future to start making appointments for the vaccinations. This does not tell you when you will get a vaccination, but it just gets your name in the system. Right now, the, the next wave will be on phase two, which is predominantly going to be for our county, will be 65 years of age and older. So I encourage people to try to either get onto the, our county health on Facebook, or you can go to Amberwell Health and find the link and/or find that contact information. So I hope this starts to get people in the, the mode of thinking of how they're going to get their, their name into the system. So. Yeah, Wes says it's on our county website also. Thank you, Wes.
So encourage everybody, and especially if you know somebody that is 65 plus that doesn't have access to internet. You might, you know, family members or whatever, you might make sure they're aware of it. Maybe you could help in that process.
Yeah, I want to add that there's a lot of people that assume that we are starting phase two already. We are not there yet. That is when that triggers the, when we go into phase two for this new demographic to start the vaccinations. So people be, please be patient. They're going to get to you. It is also going to be very dependent on when the actual vaccine arrives. So, you know, no need of putting word out until we actually get the physical vaccine in county.
I have a comment.
Sure.
First of all, I want to apologize how I started the meeting. I am not one to rush and I was on the phone with the county councillor actually as I hung up on him to start the meeting and I was just trying to check my boxes of, of doing everything correctly and by the book. But I did want to say that we, as commissioners, have heard concerns about mask wearing in Atchison County. And I wanted to let everyone know that it's been addressed and the individual, you know, there have been, everybody makes mistakes. It's been addressed and we are all, the HR director has sent out a reminder, everybody continue to lead by example, continue to do their part in wearing masks. So just so the public knows that's being addressed. Also, we, in the, in the next couple of weeks, will be reviewing our policies on social media as well. So just wanting the public to know, when I receive concerns on my, on my phone or via email, that I want to make sure that everyone knows they're being addressed. So. That's what I had.
I'd just like to remind everybody, social distance, wear your mask and wash your hands. Keep our community safe. As a kind of an add-on to what Casey just said. Okay, moving right along. Jamie Madison, HR Director, COVID-19 policy approval.
Good afternoon. I have sent you all the Atchison County 2021 emergency paid sick leave policy. The employee COVID-19 policy that was passed in March expired at the end of December. Although employees are not, employers are not required to provide the Families First Coronavirus Response Act leave. After December 31st, employers may voluntary, voluntarily decide to do so. We do have a number of employees that are still being affected by COVID-19 and the quarantine orders. And I think it is the right thing to do for our employees to go ahead and make an amendment to this policy to extend it until June 30th of 2021.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the 2021 COVID sick leave policy. It's been moved by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Jamie, you want to cover the opening of the courthouse? Is that something you've covered now?
Yep. We can get it up here. If approved today, we will be sending out a news release that we will be having limited public asset, access to the county departments and offices. We will be unlocking the north doors of the courthouse that have been locked for several months now. Most departments still want to have appointments only. So please make sure for Treasurers Office, Clerk's Office, Registered Deeds, Appraiser's Office, probation and most others, please make sure you're calling those departments and making the appointments as requested. But the doors will be open. This is to help accommodate with court, the court system on it.
This will be effective Monday, Jamie?
It will take effect Thursday, January 21st.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the opening of the courthouse. 移动所有，seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? I would just like to point out the reason that the, a lot of these offices are requiring appointments. The actual physical space within those apartment offices don't allow for social distancing except for a couple of people. So please be mindful of the employment requirements of most of the county offices. Anything else? The Chair would entertain a motion, sorry, the Chair would call for the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pass the three to zero. Okay. EMS, EMS Commission Report received it. I would suggest receiving and file unless there's questions by the commissioners. It was a stellar report as usual. EMS is really doing a great job. Okay, moving right along. Andrea Clements, Livewell, Atchison. Update for the Commission?
Andrea, so I'm just coming with you today for an update, kind of a little bit about 2020 and then what we've been doing and where we're going. 2020, obviously, we didn't get to do as much as we'd hoped to do, but we did wrap up our Pathways Grant. And in the wrapping up of that, kind of some of the final initiatives that we completed were through the Work Well Kansas Program. The county received $10,000 to, for its employees. And they, I believe, I worked with Shelley Nelson on this and their plans were to use that funding to provide employees with farmer's market vouchers, to install some water coolers and to get some more refrigeration so that staff could bring their lunches and have healthier food options within the workday. Another part of that that was involved in the wrap-up was additional funding to our county schools. So specifically, 377 ended up receiving a total of 14, actually not the district, the elementary school ended up receiving a total of $14,000 and they used those funds for additional PE equipment. They got some really cool things out of that and they also installed water bottle fillers within their school as well. And they purchased, last I knew, they were purchasing water bottles for all of their students also. And then we're working, we've received funding to work with the City of Atchison to install a Gaga ball pit. That's still in the plans. The funding was approved early spring or even late winter, the early part of 2020. And then COVID hit and the city wasn't doing kind of special, beyond the necessary critical scope of work. So those funds are still sitting there and those will, that will happen still. So that Pathways Grant wrapped up in, on September 1st of 2020. And that was a four-year grant, if you'll recall. We also had another four-year grant wrap-up end of 2020. That was our prevention grant that was specifically targeted at underage drinking. And that group that meets, it's a group of county schools, mental health professionals, clergy members. Those are, that's kind of what that group is made out of. And that group was planning a youth wellness fair. That was one of the things that our group identified as wanting to do in response to the deaths that we had of two of our youth back in 2019, the beginning of, I believe, 2019. And so our schools were working together to get that youth wellness fair done. But then kind of had to put that on the back burner when they had to close school down. So those, that plan is still in effect as well and the schools were really excited to get that rolling. And so once, once they're able to, that will happen. We also did a large mask initiative. So we partnered with Burger Company and with Walmart and with the support of Dr. Representative Epley. We were able to get thousands of masks out into the community for free. We did one event where we handed out masks and then we worked with our local business partners, primarily retailers, to get those into the stores so that when people frequented the stores, they could pick up a mask. And we had some businesses calling us two and three times to get restock of those masks. That was successful.
In the courthouse. So thank you for getting those to us.
Yes, yes. We had a lot, we took a lot to you guys. Yeah. And to City Hall and some other places. We sent some to Buckingham. Yeah, so they were kind of throughout the whole county. We did not get to do our annual backpack giveaway, but we did donate supplies to our schools. So at least we were able to support the schools kind of directly in helping their students with supplies this year. And then as far as kind of what we've been doing, we're really in the midst of a strategic planning moment, I guess you would say, over the past couple of months. We're exploring some long-term partnerships, strategic partnerships with organizations within the community. So we hope to have more final information on that come within the next 30 days. In the pipeline, like I mentioned, we're still planning to resume our plans for the youth wellness fair. Hopefully this year we'll also be able to do our backpack giveaway. Something that came to mind recently is just the South Atchison Trail needs a cleanup. So we've helped facilitate a cleanup in the past for that. So when the weather allows, we probably will initiate a cleanup for the South Atchison Trail. And then we're continuing to kind of stay on top of what is best practices as far as health and wellness out there. We do a lot of that through our, the county health rankings website. There are a wealth of information. So we are just continually trying to stay up on what is trending in the health and wellness kind of field. So any questions on any of that before I, I just had a couple of other things for you?
Keep going.
Okay. I just wanted to say, one, is there anything else that Livewell can do to help promote the NEK Shot of Hope? We did post on our Facebook page and to get that information out there. But anything that we else, anything else that we can do to support that message and communicate that message, obviously let us know or if you have ideas at the moment.
Sure. Commissioner Hall would like to speak on that?
I, I don't know of anything off the top of my head. I will pass that on to Wes and Lori. I, I don't know what the need is right now. I don't. I, I think they anticipate a flood of people signing up. So I don't think they'll know until maybe it comes, how many. So we may need help on that. That's just my guess. I was, like I said, I was in touch with Wes and Lori this morning. So, and it's just been rolled out. I know that there was a technical glitch on one of the links and I pointed it out and Wes is taking care of that. So hopefully everything will be workable. And if there's any problem, you can't get ahold of the Health Department or you can't get ahold of Wes, get ahold of me and I'll pass those things on. And I'll forward your offer to them.
Yeah, please do. Please do. And then back in 2019, we talked about having county representation on our board. So we'd love to have somebody join us, even if it's not a commissioner, if you have staff members. I've worked with several of your staff members throughout the last several years. So if there are any staff members that you would like to appoint to our board, we would love to have county representation on our board as well. So. And then we have our Board President Jeff with us. So.
So we've discussed this, Andrea. The Commission doesn't feel like we should be involved with every nonprofit board in the community.
Right.
But you're more than welcome to invite anybody that's served on your board. We're not going to assign anybody his official capacity.
Okay. That's fine.
I think if there's something on the agenda that you feel that is maybe needs an attention of the County Commission, anything specific, you might reach out to one of us or all of us and maybe we could attend that meeting and, and that would be a way of, without having official recognition, recognition there, we can still participate in those single topics.
That makes sense.
I would also mirror Eric's response that we would be more than happy to maybe sit in on a meeting or here and there. But it's just hard to dedicate to one nonprofit in Atchison County, a commissioner, when we're not doing it for all of them. So.
Yeah. And I didn't, I don't expect you specifically, that's why I wanted to bring up a staff member. And I didn't know if you wanted to appoint that person or we, that's completely fine for us to seek out and talk to the staff one-on-one. So. To check in first on that.
What's going on this year, Andrea?
So right now, we're planning for the year to happen. We're planning for the backpack giveaway. We're planning for our community block party trailer was in use like constantly back when there was events happening. And so as events begin to happen more, we'll promote that and encourage use of that. We also are in the midst of our strategic kind of partner, well, not our strategic planning. So once that's resumed or resolved over the next 30 days, hopefully we will have additional, more clear set plans for our path forward in 2021 and beyond. So. That's where we're at at the moment.
We've allocated $11,500 for your organization for 2021. What's, those are taxpayer dollars. What are you spending that money on?
Right now, that money is being spent on our, the planning for what we're going to do in the future. When, and additionally, it will be, it will be spent on the backpack giveaway, the staff support to do the work of the organization. And then the tasks and the plans that come to fruition or come to be developed after we're complete with our planning process. So we are more than happy to come back and report more specifically on what those plans are once they're finalized. I can't tell you what those are because they're not complete right now. So we are happy to be accountable for those tax dollars and, and report to you how those are spent further beyond what I've already described to you. Once our strategic planning is complete and those partnerships are in line. But other than that, that's where we are at the beginning of the year.
Do you believe that the County Commission supports community health?
I do.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
No, I would just say if you could keep us in the loop of all of your, when you do get back to planning events so that we can make sure and help promote those down throughout the county as well. So we'd be more than happy to help where we can.
Will do.
Thank you for appearing, Andrea.
No problem. Thank you for having me.
Okay, Wes Lander, Emergency Management Director, vehicle replacement approval.
Good afternoon. The Commission has a PO for the replacement of the EM vehicle that was totaled in the deer accident. Our insurance payout was $37,591. The new vehicle is 52810. So it'd be a difference. A difference of $6,937.10 that we would actually pay out of the emergency management budget for the 2021 year. And that'll be ordered through the KHP Partners Program, which is state contract.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a Ford Expedition Max for $44,528.10 to the Zek Ford. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Quinn to approve. Do I have a second?
One second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to lend some comments because Wes and I had a conversation last week. I was trying to understand the state contracts and how the dealerships are chosen. And it's, it's a lot more cost-effective to go with the state deal. And then from that, we chose the dealership closest to Atchison County that we have working relationships with. Can you just touch on that? Wes, just a little bit like you explained it to me so that the public can understand why we're not going with someone closer or.
So what actually happens is we are not, we're not dealing with a dealership individually. We're actually going to a state contract which, which deals directly with Ford. So our check will actually be to KHP Partners Program, which they will in turn write for their check. And then we just choose one of their, one of their dealerships to deliver the vehicle to. So the only one in our area that is on the state contract delivery for Ford was Danny Zek Ford in Leavenworth. Yeah, we get a much better price on vehicles by going to a state contract and dealing directly with the manufacturer than going to a respective dealer and getting a price from them. In fact, I've always in the past sent the prices to the dealers to see if they come anywhere close to matching it. And when I do so, they, they can't touch that price. They can't get close enough.
Gotcha. Thank you for explaining that because my question was like Foster Ford. I know Atchison County residents work there and do a lot of promoting in Atchison County and that's the reason why we didn't go with them because of the cost factor. So thanks for explaining that, Wes.
You're welcome.
Okay, Wes, you're still on for the information technology for people wear agreement. Want to explain what this is?
I need to vote on that last one first.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pass the three to zero. Okay, you're still on, Wes.
Okay, the next one is for our people wear agreement with Computer Information Concepts out of Greeley, Colorado. This is the county CIC information system that almost every county in our, or every office in our county utilizes this software. It's what makes everything possible for, for all, everything we do. That invoice for the renewal is $6,330. And then I have to sign the contract and send it back with the check. Any questions on that?
I guess. No, I think you explained it. So the Chair would entertain a motion for Computer Information Concepts for the People Wear Agreement for $56,330. Do I have a motion to approve?
Also move.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass the three to zero. Wes Lander notes, we have a purchase order from Stacy Wackel. How do I find it here? You're with me in a minute? Purchase order for a Kenworth dump truck, which is $124,244.50, I'm sorry, $90 cents. It's MCH in Topeka. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve this purchase order.
Also move.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hall, seconded by I'll second it for discussion purposes. Any further discussion?
Sorry, I was just looking back through the notes from, from this morning. Because is that the total for the purchase order after? Because is that the total for the purchase order after the insurance amount?
No, no, that's, you might want to point that out that there's a significant insurance claim.
Yeah, yeah, because that's, that's what I was trying to wrap my head around. That's why I didn't want to second it. But this morning we got a request for a PO for a new dump truck. And the dump truck purchase was approved by the commission in August after they received a check for the dump truck that was totaled at Road and Bridge last winter. That insurance amount was $49,241.67. And so that drew me to have some questions of why solid waste equipment was being used by Road and Bridge. And I was made aware that this dump truck is strictly solid waste and will not be used in any other departments. That was a historic event and that is not the case moving forward. So those were some of my questions that I got answered, just to let the public know kind of where we're at in that.
I'd like to point out that was also approved by our solid waste committee. And it's been a long time coming because we talked about lots of different alternatives. So the net price is probably about $70,000, something like that case we discuss a lot. Now we have to pay the full amount and then we're reimbursed for the insurance.
Perfect.
The Chair, the Chair would call for the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, moving right along. Roger GIS Coordinator Purchase Order Approval for Sundeck's Mapping Upgrade.
This spring, Certex, on behalf of the state of Kansas, will be flying the entire state of Kansas for the upgrade of the next generation 911 system. As part of those flights, they allow us the opportunity to upgrade certain portions of our county from what they fly it at, which is a one-foot resolution to a higher resolution of six inches or three inches. I am recommending that we upgrade a 107 mile square mile corridor of Atchison County, which includes the incorporated municipal jurisdictions and all of that corridor where the highest population centers are. Upgrade that to six inch pixel. The total cost of that is $15,150. Of that, the city has made a commitment to me that they would assist to the tune of $5,000 for that, which means our portion of the upgrade would be $10,150. This is being recommended in lieu of the normal upgrade, which would be the entire county would cost us about $60,000. I believe this to be a very good proposal to assist the county. And I think it makes us good financial stewards of the taxpayers' dollar. Any questions?
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase order for the cap outlay of $10,150. The actual purchase is for $15,150, but the city of Atchison is paying them $5,000. So the net price is $10,150. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Commissioner Quinn, seconded by Commissioner Knoll. Any further discussion?
I just, I wanted to say that I approved that based on the recommendation of the appraiser. It's going to make her job a lot easier and she's willing to take that out of her budget allocated funding. So thanks to Debbie on that.
Okay, all, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Passes three to zero. Okay, the next thing I have is I have a, I have a letter of support to the Kansas Main Street Project in care of action Chamber of Commerce that the county commission supports. They're trying to, they're applying for membership that will help our, our area in our commercial district area with that program. Any questions about the Main Street program? The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the letter of support.
Also move.
It's been moved by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by, I'll, I'll second it for discussion purposes. Any questions or discussion?
I just received it at 12:06, so I haven't had a chance to review it yet.
We'll give you a moment, Casey. While you're looking it over, I just mentioned, I know they've been talking about this for 20 years.
Right, I just, before I, well, before I would approve something, I'd like to just review it.
No, I, I wasn't, as soon as you get ready, ready, let me know.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. All the unfinished business before the board. I don't show any on the agenda. Does anybody have anything? County Councilor updates. Kyle, can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
You can't.
Yeah, I think it'll take just a second to buffer in here. I, I don't have anything to add to the discussion.
Okay. Any commissioners have a question of the county councilor? Okay, moving right along, executive session. What do we have for executive session, Kyle?
The Chair of Lori is on here requesting that we, that we have one to, I would characterize it as attorney-client discussion. And I think probably 30 minutes.
Eric, do you have to have the language for the motion?
No, I cannot find it here. It's been a while since I've had that. I can't find my.
The only one I have is for elected personnel or non-elected personnel.
I don't have that, Wes.
Okay, we simply make a motion to put executive session for client attorney privilege? Or do we need to have all the privilege?
It needs to have the privilege. I'm opening it up here.
Send it over to me, aye. I could read it.
I found it.
Okay, you want to make a motion, Eric?
Okay, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at 1:37 PM for consultation with an attorney for the Board, Pat Henderson, County Counselor, which consultation would be that deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and that the executive session is necessary to protect the attorney-client privilege. The executive session will be conducted in a breakout room using the Zoom platform. The Board will come out of executive session in 30 minutes, which would be 2:07. And PM, either on the Zoom platform or in the commission room, first floor courthouse in open session. And those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson and Jack Lowry, Sheriff. Is there anybody else to be included that I don't know of? Okay.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Quinn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, we're going to be in executive session here comes the breakout room. Back to executive session. Commissioner Knoll, do you have a motion? You're not muted, you're muted, Eric.
I'm sorry, I'll start again. I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at 2:07 PM for consultation with an attorney for the Board, Pat Henderson, County Counselor, which consultation would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship and that the executive session is necessary to protect the attorney-client privilege. The executive session will be conducted in a breakout room using the Zoom platform. The Board will come out of executive session at 2:17 PM, either on the Zoom platform or in the commission room, first floor courthouse in the open session. And those present will be the three commissioners, Sheriff Jack Lowry and County Counselor Pat Henderson.
You said how long, Eric?
10 minutes, which would be 7, 2:17, correct? Or we're a little beyond that, probably the time it's taken to come in and out. What, I can't see my clock from here.
I got 2:09.
2:09, 10 minutes, 2:19. I'll change, make that recommendation change.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, passes three to zero. We're going to the executive session. We are back. Okay, any public comments?
I have one, hang on please.
Sure, okay.
Public comment, he asked for a public comment.
Oh, I just, I'm Dolores Service with Matt Pleasant Township. And I just came up because there's a letter of interest for somebody for our open position for clerk. And I'd like to see her get the position.
Okay. Casey, you want to answer that or should I answer? I think, I think that what's going to happen is we're going to consider that application. But we're going to spend one week trying to see if there's anybody else that wants to come forward. So by transparency, we're letting everybody have a chance. And we're just planning on discussing it next week. Casey?
You're muted, Casey.
You're muted. Casey?
Sorry, when we come out of executive session, it automatically mutes me. But just so you know, Dolores, I let the board know this morning in our workshop that we have both been actively trying to find people that are interested in the district or in the township to apply. And we've been striking out over and over again. So it's not that we haven't been trying and advertising it, but we're just going to, they're going to put it online for a week and then we will choose.
I, I do think, I do think that this person would be the perfect fit. She's had a couple of long-term really good jobs. It's taught her a lot that will help in township work.
Awesome.
So yeah, that's what I came for.
Yeah, Dolores, there's, I have no idea who the applicant is, but this is the first time I've heard about it. And we just thought that possibility of other people in the township that haven't heard about it ought to have the same opportunity. But I have no idea or I'm not against the person that you've already got an applicant for, application for. So we'll consider it next week.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, commissioners have any more comments for that? Okay, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at 2:22 PM.
Casey, did you have a comment before we went to there?
Well, kind of, but I don't know what the best way is because I kind of brought it up last Monday. But I'm just, I, I'm very, I'm concerned after my brain fart with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm concerned that this Tuesday, 10 and one is going to make us, I mean, even just having all of our ducks in a row for this meeting and, and in front of us, I don't like to rush because I'm a very detailed person and I want to be on my A game and have my questions answered. And I just, I worry about that. I know we already voted last week. But I'm going to kind of probably portray that to the county also to give us a little leeway there. Because I, on our meeting workshops, I anticipate them to continue to be several hours and then running into the same thing to come right back. I just think we need a little bit more time, but that's just my concern, I guess.
Okay, anybody else got anything? The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
It's been moved by Commissioner Knoll, seconded by Commissioner Quinn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, see you next week.
Thank you.